Welcome to the San Mateo City Council Regular Meeting this Tuesday evening on June 20th. I now call this meeting to order. I invite us all to please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to our Deputy Clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press *9 to raise your hand. When called upon, press *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. One of the -- my favorite times of year is we get to do a ceremonial recognition of our sister city. In here in -- here today, we have our Toyanaka Sister Cities baseball team. And we are so pleased to honor this tradition with a presentation. The tradition dates back to 1979. And our sister city baseball team is represented by Mr. Dan Harris, President of our Sister Cities Association. And also, we want to acknowledge Dan Harris, our baseball team manager. And we hope that you all will be available to do a presentation on this event. And if those of you in the audience who don't know, this is a special year because we are going to be doing a delegation to Japan, which I will be joining. So, we will all become very familiar with each other soon in November. So, I want to please start with reading the certificates.
Madam Mayor, I think we would like to bring Gavin Owen up to make some remarks.
Yes, please.
Yes, you can come on.
You'll apologize, Mayor Lee. Some of the info, I think, was incorrect. My name's Gavin Owen. I'm actually the President of the Sister City Association.
My apologies. Please welcome Gavin Owen, our President of the Sister Cities Association. And that will be the last time I make that mistake.
No, I think it was also --
Because we'll be best friends soon.
It's okay. I think it was unknown if I was gonna make it today, so. Four years ago when I made last -- last made this, I did not need these, so. Konnichiwa, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Lee, Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash, members of the council. It is my privilege at this time to present to you the 2023 San Mateo Toyanaka Goodwill Baseball Team. This is a very special year as we celebrate the 60th anniversary of the city-sister-city relationship between Toyanaka, Japan, and San Mateo. The two cities came together in 1963 in an effort to build and maintain lasting bonds of friendship through various cultural programs and exchanges. Ten years ago, as part of the 50th anniversary celebration, here in this very room, the sitting mayors of our two cities re-sign the agreement to keep the sister-city relationship going strong for another 50 years and beyond. Many of us here today have been players, coaches, host families, student ambassadors, chaperones, or parents involved with this association, and understand the impact such programs can have on the many people they reach. Since 1979, the Youth Baseball Exchange has been at the forefront of this relationship, alternating every two years since a team of youth players traveled to Toyanaka or San Mateo for eight to 10 days to play a series of games, homestay with local families, and experience a world far different from their own. Although originally chosen for their skills on the playing field, the members of the team attend cultural classes, help in fundraising and event efforts, and ultimately become more than just ballplayers, they become proud youth ambassadors to the city of San Mateo. The two cities over the years have also engaged in exchanges involving student ambassadors, senior groups, girls softball, student band, and kept communication lines open for further programs to blossom and grow, not like the sakura, which only brings wonder and delight for a short time every spring, but to mature like a stout maple or redwood, offering support year-round and decades of enjoyment. None of these would be possible without the hard work of our volunteers, and I would like to recognize a few that are here tonight: Danny Harris, George Musante, and Yoko Anderson. Just making sure I didn't miss anyone that's here tonight. And I would also like to say that I was lucky enough to be selected to this team in 1990 as a player. And I'm honored today to stand here before the members of the city council and citizens of this great city and present to you your 2023 San Mateo Toyanaka Goodwill Baseball Team.
Yes, so I'll come down and if you could read off our certificate holders, and I will present them with our certificates, and then we can all take a picture over there.
Okay, great. I'm gonna invite my colleague and teammate from 1990, Danny Harris, here to continue. One important thing that I is fundraising efforts have -- are underway now, and we have a budget of a goal of raising $100,000 to fund the entire trip. This is a unique program in that no one's responsible for writing a check, that we -- everybody works together and pools the efforts to make sure that all 20 boys can make this or have this experience. So, I encourage anybody to go to our website at smsistercity.com to learn more information and find out ways that you can help support the program.
Thank you. And I hope that the message rings loud and clear to our council, who have been very generous among the years. And also, I wanted to acknowledge that our sister city of Toyanaka, they generously donated to our storm fund. And so, there's been a very healthy and reciprocal relationship with Toyanaka over the years. And so, we hope to reach our fundraising goal so everyone can make this trip. So, I'll come down and meet you.
So, the first player on our team is Jackson Potam. Miguel Seja Jr. Peter Cruz. Alonso De Leon. Caleb Kawata.
Good handshake.
Colton Godfrey.
We got an IOU, okay? High five.
Cody Gordon. Camila O'Teen. CJ Johnson.
Congratulations.
Carl Kubayama. Aiden Lowen. Evan McCoy. Maddox Stone.
Okay, we're gonna hold this one. That's a placeholder, okay? Thank you.
Carter Ware. Jacob Wright. Aiden Yoshino. Willen Zargar. And Justin Zuka.
Thank you. Okay, wait. Who didn't get one? And for anyone who doesn't know, these players were selected not just for their skill and the technical skills of playing baseball, but also for their strong ability to be representatives of the city, that they hold the qualities and traits of leadership. And so, they are well-representing San Mateo already. I'm so excited to go on the trip with you, and I have a lot of names to learn, so. Should we get the volunteers? Hey, Dan, some of our volunteers? Wait, should we do one with a peace sign? The Japanese tradition? That one's for Toyanaka. All right, good job, everyone. Thank you for being here. And we'll see you London. The best. Okay, moving on. Our item number -- ceremonial item number two is the Mosquito Control Awareness Week proclamation. We have Rachel Curtis Wobles, Public Health Education and Outreach Officer with San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District here for some remarks. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Unfortunately, that's a very hard act to follow. But that is, I will explain that that is my typical audience, is elementary school students. So, a lot of my vocabulary is very simple and hopes that everyone will understand by the end of this presentation exactly what we do for the residents of San Mateo County. I'm here representing San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District tonight. All right, and next slide. We are a taxpayer-funded special district. We're an independent special district, and we serve the entire county, including the people I currently have my back to, I'm sorry. We're all state-certified, and our mission is really to protect the health and comfort of people living in San Mateo County. We're a relatively small staff, only about 25 to 30 people, and we're headquartered in Burlingame. All of our work is based on integrated pest management. We offer a variety of services. Mosquito control is our core, core service that we do without anyone asking. It's mandated by our existence. And when somebody asks for a specific service on public or private property, we come and there's no charge to that individual because it is covered by the property tax fees. I'm hoping some of you know, but in case not, mosquitoes lay their eggs in or near water, and then their babies and their teenagers all live in water until the only stage that you probably most recognize is the flying adults. So, anywhere where they're standing stagnant water is a risk for mosquitoes breeding. The overall risk of disease in our county from mosquitoes is relatively low. However, we are always on alert for West Nile virus, which can be really heartbreaking cases, particularly in older individuals. And so, the Report Dead Birds program is part of our surveillance for that disease. We say one mosquito is one too many. Please report any mosquitoes. I always say you might know about us, but your neighbor a few houses down might not know, and you might be having one mosquito, they might be having hundreds of mosquitoes, and mosquitoes know no fence or property lines. So, give us a call and we can come figure out where the problem is coming from. We offer mosquito fish for free to the public, no cost. These will eat the little larvae that are in the water, so that we can place them in a variety of different non-natural water sources. We can also identify insects and ticks and all sorts of weird creepy crawly things that might or might not be biting you in your house or outside. And anyone can submit a sample for that, and we'll offer advice based on that particular sample. One of our -- we all have rats in our backyards. It is a plague of living in an urbanized area, but we really want to prevent rats from getting into people's homes. And so, we can come do a customized inspection of your home, or we've done even public buildings in the past, and really showing all the nooks and crannies that they can get into to try to prevent them from getting in and possibly causing disease to people in those residences. And then, especially during the summer, we will come and we will get rid of yellow jacket nests. Yellow jackets look a lot like bees, but they're the ones who are bothering you at your picnic or your backyard barbecue. They're coming for the sugar in your drinks and the protein in your meat. They live in nests in the ground, and because they're so aggressive, and some people are quite allergic to their stings, we will come for no cost to eliminate the nest. In San Mateo City, in the city of San Mateo alone, in 2022, we responded to over 400 requests from residents of the city for help with various issues. We regularly inspect. We don't put pesticide out without first inspecting, and so, it's a requirement of IPM and how we work to make sure that we're always inspecting, a lot more than retreating. And so, you'll see, we actually inspected over 3,600 sources last year. And then, I wanted to point out two things that I know we're dealing with in San Mateo, specifically over the past several months, particularly in the eastern parts of the city of San Mateo, in Foster City and Redwood Shores, we're dealing with a lot of midge calls. Midges look very, very similar to mosquitoes. They are in little swarms. They bother your doors. They're at your windows at night. They do not bite. They don't even have the mouthparts that would allow them to bite for these particular midges. And we think that with all that rain we got in the winter, that there's extra fresh water in the lagoon right now, and the low salinity in the lagoon really offers this pulse of midges to happen. So, we expect this every year, and this year it's just been dragging on sort of for an extra long time, but we're still responding to calls from the public and encouraging the public that if you see them and you are getting bit, and you might also have a mosquito problem, so please do call us. We'll always do an identification. And then, the other thing we dealt with a lot with from all the historic rains is there is water everywhere, and it's still not drying up as quickly as it would in other years. And so, we did a big campaign in parts of the city of San Mateo specifically for water under houses that was just standing there for a long time. And we go and we don't remove the water from under the house. That's up to the homeowner. But we can, in the meantime, while the waters, they are treat the water, so it's not also producing mosquito problems for them and their neighbors. And we certainly want to remind residents that they can also play a big role in mosquito control by emptying outstanding water from their backyard. I'm happy to answer any questions, but anyone is always welcome to call us at any time. We'll be having an open house in August, so we'll give more information to the comms team to share with the residents in case anyone wants to stop by.
Thank you so much, and I do highly recommend your services, as I have used them for my yellow jacket infestation that was promptly treated for free, just as quickly as I called. So, I will read this proclamation. Whereas, the American Mosquito Control Association has declared the week of June 18 to 24, 2023, as the National Mosquito Control Awareness Week, and whereas National Mosquito Control Awareness Week aims to educate the public about the significance of mosquitoes in their daily life and the appropriate service provided by mosquito control workers, and whereas excess numbers of mosquitoes and other vectors spread diseases, reduce the enjoyment of both public and private outdoor living spaces, reduce property values, hinder outdoor work, reduce livestock productivity, and have a negative impact on the environment, and whereas three mosquito-borne viruses cause significant disease in California, the West Nile Virus, St. Louis Encephalitis, thank you, and Western Acorn Encephalitis virus, did I get that? And whereas, from 2003 to 2022, there have been 7,696 West Nile virus cases, with 373 deaths reported in California alone, and whereas surveillance and control of mosquitoes is critical to reduce public health risk of mosquito-borne diseases, and whereas adequately funded, science-based, professional mosquito vector control disease surveillance and public awareness programs are the best ways to prevent outbreaks of mosquito-borne diseases, and whereas a result of the threat mosquitoes pose to California's economic development and health of its citizens, 104 years ago, the California Legislature enacted California Mosquito Abeyment Districts Act. Whereas professional mosquito and vector control based on scientific research has made great advances in safety, safely reducing mosquito and vector populations and the diseases they transmit, and whereas the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District was established in 1916, and whereas the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District in mission, its mission is to safeguard the health and comfort of citizens of San Mateo County through a science-based program of integrated vector management, whereas the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District works with mosquito and vector control districts throughout California, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, and California Department of Public Health to reduce pesticide risk to humans from mosquitoes and vector-borne diseases and nuisances, and whereas National Mosquito Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of the threat of diseases and encourage the public to take action in preventing mosquito-transmitted disease, and will highlight the activities of various mosquitoes and vector research and control agencies working to minimize the health threat within California. Whereas, I am Ren Lee, Mayor of the city of San Mateo, on behalf of myself and the behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize June 18 to June 24, 2023, as Mosquito Control Awareness Week. That was a tongue twister, and this font is like six-point. So, thank you. Thank you so much, and happy to present this proclamation. And please do encourage everyone to use this incredible service, free for San Mateo County. Please.
This is a fine organization. I participated in the 2002-2003 grand jury study, and you got high marks from the grand jury. Are you still doing what you used to do, the presentations on vector control to homeowners' associations?
Yes, we're available for that. Actually, I gave a presentation to the Beresford Hillsdale Neighborhood Association a few months ago, and we're certainly available for any homeowner association meetings, too. All you have to do is call and ask, and they'll put you through to me, and I'll come out.
They're great presentations.
Thank you.
And very informative. One question. When we see dead crows, that's an indication of West Nile. And in the past, we had to get the crow to you within two hours. Has that time been extended at all to be able to test the crow?
Yeah, so the way it works now is the state has a statewide hotline to call, and somebody will ask you to do a little bit of assessment of the dead bird. If it looks as if it's something that we could test, it looks like it's been dead for less than 24 hours, we will actually send somebody to pick it up that same day and then collect it and test it.
It had something to do in the past with the liquid that was still on the eyes?
Yes, that's correct. We do. It's a rather morbid sampling procedure. Effective, yes. And I would just like to say thank you to our Board of Trustee Representatives from the city of San Mateo, who's trustee Ed Jagla Antoni. He wasn't able to be here tonight because his grandson is graduating from somewhere, which we congratulate him on as well.
Okay, this next one will be a tongue twister and a tearjerker. We're moving on to recognize our city manager, Drew Corbett. We'll start by reading the Comendore Resolution. And Drew, do I have your attention? This is for you. Resolution Number C1, 2023, commending Drew Corbett for his eight years of service from 2015 to 2023. Resolved by the city council of the city of San Mateo, California, that Drew Corbett has served the city of San Mateo with distinction from August 17, 2015, as the city treasurer, finance director, as city assistant manager, beginning on October 23, 2016, and as city manager since December 23, 2018. And whereas the finance -- as finance director, he oversaw complicated financial programs and options, including operating and capital investment -- including operating and capital investment budgets, fee revisions, partnership with San Mateo Joint Powers Authority on all manner of bonds, and many other financial vehicles. Drew had an ability to explain these intricate financial options in single, simple terms, so that understanding was assured, and because of this, he rarely had public comment. Whereas, a majority -- major initiative was the upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant and clean water program overseeing the complicated funding to ensure that the largest capital improvement project in the city's history could move forward timely, was funded appropriately, and with understanding from the community. And whereas his subsequent roles as he guided discussions on the possibility of relocating the courtyard, actually relocating the Workers Resource Center, and making a police sleeping quarters, multiple discussions on Measure P and height limits, major initiatives such as ADUs and JDUs, managed interactions with our lobbyists, and kept his fingers on the pulse of the state legislature, stayed on top of staffing and recruitment issues, attended innumerable closed sessions, and influenced streamlined and clearly defined procedures with proposed updates to the city council guidelines and the boards and commissions' rules and procedures. And whereas, San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department came to fruition under his watch after years of planning and negotiations, and Drew ensured that fire services continue to be a major part of the city, and whereas Drew has provided direction and advice on the major undertakings of both the General Plan 2040 and the housing element as the city works to come up with its future vision for the community. And whereas Drew led the city and community through the most paralyzing time with the onset of COVID-19 crisis beginning in March 2020, immediately launching the Emergency Operations Center, declaring a state of emergency following the health directives coming from the state, completely redoing city service delivery methods. the state, completely redoing city service delivery methods, leading innovation, deploying staffing without layoffs, providing community services through leveraging city infrastructure such as deploying recreation centers as, as school sites, pivoting to online services, responding to changing conditions, and providing updates at each council meeting. His thoughtful approach to problem solving, creative solution-based input, and calm demeanor meant the city successfully navigated this critical time. And whereas, at the start of the pandemic, a countrywide movement to honor Black Lives Matter swept the nation, and the City of San Mateo responded by partnering with community members to safely conduct a rally and march to recognize and address the issues with discrimination. This resulted in the establishment of an internal and community-led organization to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. And whereas, during the midst of COVID-19, the city received the threat of a lawsuit to move to district-based elections. With Drew's guidance, the city produced a robust public engagement program and successfully moved to a five-district system without engaging in a lawsuit. And whereas, in December of 2022, the city experienced winter storms that stretched the city's infrastructure and responsiveness to the limit, and resulted in the launching of a second Emergency Operations Center of Drew's career, where he has continued to find solutions and improve responsiveness. And now, therefore, the city council does hereby formally thank and extend its deepest appreciation for the public service leadership and deft hand at the wheel of government given by Drew Corbett. Okay. Drew's like, enough already. We still have more. I wanted to offer each council member an opportunity to give some remarks, and as well as the public, before we hear from you, Drew. And who would like to start? Councilmember Hedges.
Drew, I just want to tell you how much respect I have for you, and how frightened I was in January when I got your email. But I'll tell you, the first thing I remember about you was your vast knowledge of our city budget and the manner in which Measure S fit into that budget. Having had something to do with helping pass Measure S, I was so thankful for your guidance. I found this out while serving on the Measure S Committee. You were our Finance Director and clearly explained the budget, and always helped us understand what was before us in our committee, and I mean that very, very, very clearly. You really led our committee quite well. I would call you for advice, and you'd always help me understand any issues that was at hand, and that has gone through to the city council. My first relationship with Drew on the council was in December. We were four new council members. I felt very comfortable with Drew as our city manager guiding us through the issues that we have with the city council. However, while at a meeting in Sacramento at 7:00 AM in the morning, I think I was the first on the city council to pick up my email, and I think I immediately said to everybody as they came in the room, "Check your email. We've got some bad news." So you helped us prepare our budget, and that was sort of the first thing I thought before I read the entire email was, oh my God, what are we going to do with our budget? Because Drew knows it so well. But you agreed to stay until the end of June to help us get that budget put through. And you also showed a great deal of leadership in selecting the team and helping us work through getting a new city manager. And for that, I'll ever be grateful to you, because I think, we'll find out later, we made a very good decision because of you. So I don't think that we'll be able to replace you, but I think in the future, we might need to eventually call you, don't change your cell phone number, to get some advice. Thanks, Drew.
Tough acts to follow. Drew, thank you for your eight years of service to the City of San Mateo. My only real regret is that I didn't get to work with you longer. Sorry to see you leaving us so soon into all of our office. Your level-headedness and strong advice has been so appreciated over the last six and a half, seven months. In typical leader fashion, you, you give the credit to everyone but yourself, and it's very admirable that you always put the team first, and that's the way you operate, and I so appreciate that. I also have been attending the Fire Board since coming on the council, and just wanted to make sure I also made a nod to thank you for serving as the Chief Administrative Officer for the San Mateo Consolidated Fire, for helping establish the San Mateo Consolidated Fire, and also for helping San Mateo build its first new fire department in several years. One of the things I've really appreciated working with you is I've never had to ask you anything twice. You've always been Johnny on the spot, and if you don't know something, by the time I talk to you again, you do. And so, we're really going to miss you. You've left really big shoes to fill, and to echo what Rich said, please don't change your cell phone. All the best, and whatever you do next, because I wish you success in your future endeavors.
Drew, I was told by a very wise person to keep my comments succinct, and that you would appreciate that. We've already heard quite a bit, and I won't try not to repeat what has already been noted, but I want to thank you for leaving us here in our city a strong and resilient foundation. I've thought about how sometimes people commend outgoing folks by saying, "We wouldn't know what to do without you," and, you know, maybe everything's going to fall apart, but I think it's to your credit that we know that the city won't fall apart immediately, that we have a strong foundation here in this city, a strong, well-run organization whose reputation is known throughout the county and beyond. That is to your credit, as Councilmember Newsom's saying, you know, when you put the team first, you're left with something, and it's important to make sure that when the time comes, we have the ability to pick ourselves up and move forward, and I'm confident that we can do that, and I thank you for leaving us well-prepared and set up for success in that regard. You know, my experience with your service in the city began with you as Finance Director and Assistant City Manager. We got to experience your strong, sensible financial guidance of this city, and we are currently enjoying the rewards of the planning you helped put into place as a result. I was here during the Great Recession, and I think how the city has been able to weather the pandemic-led recession stands in stark contrast to where we felt we were during the Great Recession, and a big difference is because of the way the city handled reserves and our budgets. Thank you for that. Of course, your tireless service to own our city, I think, has been mentioned, but especially during a pandemic that nobody asked for. And of course, we had everybody at home wondering what was going on and what would happen next, and yet, it was so important for you to lead the city and this council and the city through this pandemic, helping us stay focused and moving forward without layoffs to city employees, in creative and innovative ways to continue to serve the public. It's wild to, it's a privilege to sit here and speak to you in person about that, knowing that we got through it. And I remember sitting in my apartment, tuning into the council meetings during the thick of it, because it helped me focus in and think about, hey, what's going on in my city, and how are professionals working to make sure that services continue? Just thank you for modeling the way and getting us through it at the end of the day. No doubt at great cost to, you know, your family life and your hours and your energies. Thank you for modeling the way, being a neutral voice, and focused on providing the best solutions and answers to questions that come before this council and the city, and empowering the council to enact the will of the people. You will be greatly missed. It was a pleasure to be with you even for a short period of time. Thank you.
One more, and then Mayor Lee. So I, like Rich Hedges, was on the Measure S Subcommittee with Drew, and that was really my first experience with serving on a commission. And your commitment to integrity, authenticity, and giving us the information and letting the facts speak for themselves was so important, and I learned so much from you about city finances, how the city delivers its services, how it all fits together, and you are committed to making sure that that money we were overseeing went to exactly where the voters wanted it to go, and no one had anything less than 100,000% trust for you, and you were part of the reason I was inspired to run for city council. So whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, you are responsible, yes. And, you know, I think everyone knows, and you've got so many of your staff here and leaders on your team past and present, that there is no one more committed to serving our residents and our community than you. You are the real deal, as people say. Not a lot of fancy upfront. You hate the spotlight. You're demonstrating it right now, but it is absolutely so true. And you also said once that you don't have an off switch, and that's great for the city, but maybe not so great for you and your family, but we are forever grateful for that. You are a mentor and a partner to all of your staff, and you bring out the best in all of us in different ways, and we owe you, myself included, a tremendous debt of gratitude for all you've done for the city and how we all, myself included, have benefited from your leadership. And I just want to finish with an image of Drew that I'm sure all of us can relate to. When he announced that he was leaving after we all came back from Sacramento in shock, I asked him at one of our one-on-ones, "What are you going to do next?" And I expected you to talk about, "Well, I'm going to take a couple weeks off and then go on to my next professional adventure," and that wasn't it at all. He said, "I have a daughter who has graduated from high school, and she is going on to college, and I want to take this summer off, and I want to spend every moment I can with her so that I can remember a time when there was just a little bit of kid left in her, before she goes off to college and comes back, the successful woman that he knows you will be." And he was so proud of you, and so proud of what you're going to do, and so excited for the time that you'll spend with your family, Drew. And for me, that is, you know, he was happy, he was proud, he was a little wistful, and that as a parent, I understand, is a real feeling of joy. So we wish you luck. We hope you take that time off. We hope you, we know you will spend that time with your family. We hope you do what you need to do to take care of that back so you can start running again, and we know that whatever you do in your next professional endeavor, you will bring to it the same passion for its mission as you've done for the city. And, you know, we are just so grateful. I am personally so grateful, and I look forward to watching your future and staying in touch. Thank you so much.
Well, I can keep this short because I laid it on really thick for about 45 minutes with your mini-me cardboard cutout that's been traveling around the departments. So everyone in the audience, if you don't know, you know, as was said, Drew hates being in the spotlight, so for those of us who felt we needed to spend more quality time with him, we had a giant photo image, almost life-sized, blown up of him that's been traveling around the city in each department, and is currently in the mayor's office, where I got to lavish him with compliments. So I'll keep this short, Drew. I'm thinking about the fact that you're a marathon runner, and how that is such a perfect metaphor for, for your work, your life of service, for what feels like the race that we've been in, the marathon of service that we've been in together, and the qualities that you possess as a servant leader, which, which are obviously stamina and endurance, and adaptability. And, and one of the things that I think about in, in this metaphor is the amount of work that goes unseen, right? That the hundreds of thousands of hours and, and the dedication and the sacrifice that happens even before you start the race, and that's all of the invisible effort that, that leads us to these council meetings, that tees up the information and the education and the mentorship that we benefited from, from working with you. The fact that you have led our city to, to have such an incredible reputation that people want to work here, that people have wanted and desired to work with you. You've attracted so many talented professionals to our city to build up the foundation and the legacy. And I just, I want to leave all of us with, with this image of, of the marathon continuing, that that is like the legacy of your work. So many long-term projects are underway that Drew won't even be here to, to take any credit for. That would never be as far along, would never even be under consideration if it weren't for the work that he put in, and that's, that is, that's the legacy that we who know you in this room and who know you in the community hold that story. And I want you to know that we see you and we so appreciate you. And I'll say a lot more to your mini-me later. So this is your time, Drew, to say something. Oh, sorry. And yes, we do, we do want to open this up for a public comment.
We do have currently one request for public comment. If anyone else would like to speak to this item, please turn in a yellow speaker slip or raise your hand on Zoom. I'd like to invite Sheila Kanzian.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I am a member of the Library Board of Trustees, but I am speaking on my behalf, and more importantly, I'm speaking as a former member of the executive team that had the pleasure of working with Drew for seven years, four of those as a Finance Director and four of those as City Manager. And certainly from my perspective, I had the pleasure of working for four city managers in my tenure here. Each of them always had some crisis, mostly financial or budget or whatever, but clearly, I think, and many of you have spoken really to what I think really was one of the hallmarks of Drew's career here as City Manager, and that was really his leadership during the time of the, of the COVID pandemic. And I think there were, we were making up the rules as we went along, and I think it was, it was important that he knew that we were making up rules, and then we'd come back and tell him later, this is what we decided, and we always had his support. And I think he was really pragmatic about making sure that we were continuing with the services that the city needed, but also really being very, very supportive of the employees during that time. So thank you for the opportunity to work with you. Thank you for your support of park projects during those many years. I hope that you will continue your career in some sort of public service, and again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you. And again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to be here all night, so I'll keep this to about 45 minutes. Yeah. When I told you we'd get out of here by nine, I meant I would finish by nine. So thank you for all the kind words. First off, I want to thank my family, Melissa and Helen, all the love and support over the years. Appreciate you. You know, I feel like Helen has grown up in City Hall. I started my public sector career right after Helen was born. And, you know, having grown up in City Hall and as the deputy mayor mentioned, as she's going off to college, she doesn't know exactly what she wants to do, but she does know she doesn't want to get involved in public administration. And so, you know, I do, as my career has moved me up the peninsula, you know, I've been gone physically, I've been gone mentally, further and further away from home. Thank you for being there and being supportive of me during that time. You know, as I retire, I'll be around more. That's the good news. The bad news is I'll be around more. So you guys get to decide what you think about that. You know, next, I want to thank the council members that I've worked with over the years, the council that welcomed me to the city back in 2015. It's hard to believe it's been eight years, but Jack Matthews, David Lim, Maureen Fresket, Joe Gothles, and Rick Benia welcomed me into the city, welcomed me into the San Mateo family. I'm greatly appreciative of their support. Then there was the council that hired me as a city manager. You know, for a guy who was the finance director, it's definitely a leap of faith to hire a guy as your city manager who's spent most of his time in the back office with a ten key. And so Joe Gothles, Rick Benia, Maureen Fresket, Diane Pappin, Eric Rodriguez, incredible gratitude to them for the faith they showed in me and handing me the keys to the city to run the operation. I'll be forever indebted to them. Mayor Lee, you joined us in 2019, shortly after I became the city manager, and I would like to express my thanks to you for your support over your time on the council and also the rest of the current council. We've only been together for a short time, but, you know, Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash, council members Hedges, Lorraine, and Newsom, I thank you for the support, the continued confidence, and just the opportunity to continue to be the city manager here and work with you all over the past six to seven months. You know, next, I turn to, you know, the folks that I just couldn't do this without, the department heads. This is a group of dedicated, hard-working public servants, you know. Lots been mentioned about the pandemic, you know. They were there throughout, as Sheila mentioned, as we sort of had to make it up as we went along and figure it out. But I would like to mention all of them by name. Kathy Kleimbahn, Ed Barberini, Ken Thrasher, Patrice Olds, Christina Horstberger, Azelia Mitch, James Moore, Joanne McGrini, Teresa Abramson, Pete Owen, Ridgely, and our city attorney, Priscilla Rosiah. What an incredible team. So fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with these folks, and I assure you, you all are in very good hands. I want to take a second to recognize, there's a, so it's interesting, there's a department in the city called the city manager's office. I don't run the city manager's office. That's what Kathy does. But, so the city manager's not in charge of the city manager's office, just to clarify. But I do want to thank the city manager's office staff. So while they don't report to me, we spend a lot of time together, and I want to thank them for being here. Jennifer Chen, Andrea Chau, Denise Garcia, Samantha Weigle, and of course Lori Strange. So thank you all for being here. I will miss our weekly meetings. And finally, city staff. I mean, they're what make this go around. You know, we are, we are a service business and service as people, and our service is performed by city staff. You know, you mentioned council member Lorraine used the word foundation. That's a really important word. City staff is the foundation of this city. I cannot think of a more dedicated group of public servants than the employees of the city of San Mateo. They are just incredible. And I've said this before, there's something about this city. The people that work here, they love this city. They, a lot of folks have been around a long time. You see them at events, whether they're working that event or whether they're just coming to enjoy the event. They love this community, and it shows in their work and what they do for the city. I am so incredibly proud of what we've accomplished over the past, you know, four-plus years during my time as city manager, the time I was finance director, assistant city manager. But none of that happens without the key folks, city staff. So I want to, I want to thank them, and I want to echo, you know, what's been said. You all are in really, really good hands going forward. You've made an outstanding hire for your next city manager. I'm very excited. You've got an outstanding team to continue the great work of the city. And, you know, for me, it's been a real honor to serve this city, honor of a lifetime. And I thank you for this opportunity. And now we can get to work.
I'm not crying, you're crying. Must be allergies. Moving on. Deputy Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, city council meeting minutes approval. Item number five, records management policy amendment. Item number six, senior transportation get-around program agreement, and this item at the request of council member Hedges has been pulled from consent calendar for separate discussion. Item number seven, parks and recreation department classification updates. Item number eight, parks and recreation bulk printing and mailing agreement. Item number nine, fiscal year 2023-24 general liability and property insurance purchase authorization. Item number 10, downtown parking equipment network hosting and materials amendment. Item number 11, Hillsdale Caltrion commuter shuttle agreement. This item has also been pulled by council member, at the request of council member Hedges, has been pulled for separate discussion. Item number 12, construction management services for clean water program amendments. Item number 13, wastewater treatment plant, grit, rag, and scum hauling and disposal, bid rejection, and contract change order. Item number 14, citywide street reconstruction phase three project amendment. Item number 15, wastewater treatment plant immediate action projects package two appropriation and agreement. Item number 16, uniform maintenance services contract change order. Item number 17, downtown business improvement area annual report 2022-23. Item number 18, worker resource center operations agreement. Item number 19, community development block grant Samaritan House appropriation. Item number 20, on-call professional planning services agreement. And finally, item number 21, sewer service charges for fiscal years 2023-24 to 2027-28 ordinance adoption.
Thank you. So I gather item number six and 11 have been pulled. Are there any other items you'd like to pull?
I'd like to pull item number 17, the downtown business improvement area annual report.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any of the consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Madam Mayor, I have no requests to speak on the remaining items on the consent calendar.
Okay. I'd like to call for motions for item number one through five, seven through 10, 12 through 16, and 18 through 21.
Still moved.
Second.
Deputy Clerk?
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero.
Okay. Let's move on to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this as well as one other item, just mainly to highlight it to the public that these services are available. The get-around program is a great program. It's for seniors 65 or older. You get eight trips a month, and it's well-used. I'm making a recommendation that we extend that to residents of San Mateo under 64 who are using Ready Wheels. It's easy to identify who these people are because they're given a card. It would not take a lot, take a lot of staff time to actually include them. I think the other reason that I'm suggesting this is I've been in the scoping of these before I got into city council through CCAG, and equity's become a major issue in getting money for these projects. And doing that would provide an additional element of equity to the program. And I might add that through the last go-around, through the lifeline money, we only, we did not have enough programs for the, for the full amount. We were, we were under, underused. So there's around, I think, $5 million left to put into the next program, which is a significant amount of money. So that's my comments on that particular one.
I thank you for flagging this. It's a great program. I, I don't, I just want to make sure I understand the suggestion. Is there something preventing the Ready Wheels participants from utilizing the program? I thought it was open application.
Only if, if they're over 65, they may use it.
Oh, it's the age limitation.
So this is, I was involved in a lot, writing a lot of things for the grand jury, and one of them we did was on Ready Wheels, which also got high marks, but even back in those days, it was oversubscribed. And so this would be a real boon to the residents of San Mateo and also somewhat unburdened Ready Wheels.
Does anyone have any other comments?
On this or?
This item?
I would just say that I appreciate council member Hedges' comments. I find that I might be interested in supporting such a thing, but I am guessing that the time to propose this might be different from tonight, and perhaps it might be a future Blue Sky item, for example, or something. And so at the appropriate time, I would be interested in learning more and likely would support it.
I think the call for projects would be something we'd have to look at, which is coming up, but maybe not too far in the future. But definitely, if it's, if it's too close, we could do it for another call for projects because this is actually money that's funded through an outside grant. It's not from the city budget.
So if I, if I could, I think it would be best tonight to get a vote and get this contract approved so we can continue the existing program. And then to council member Hedges' point, as well as council member Lorraine, I think we will, we can be on the lookout for call for projects, and if something comes up that there could be funding for us to expand this, we could do that. And then if there were interest in us expanding it otherwise, either through city funding or looking into it further, we can do that through the Blue Skies process.
Yeah, without giving any way through the last scoping out these, there were a couple of projects that would not have gotten funded if there was a robust group of projects for funding, and the issue was that they really didn't hit equity too strongly. So one of the reasons for this, Mike, is to not only improve it for the citizens, but also make sure we have the equity issues that we need to get funded.
Thank you. And so we'll call for a vote on this. Oh, we do have public comment, excuse me. Let's open public comment on item number six.
I have one hand in Zoom. If there are any members of the public in council chambers who wish to speak to this item, please provide me with a yellow speaker slip. We will start with the first speaker, who is Robert Whitehair. Go ahead, Robert.
Good evening. I'll keep this short. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Item six on the consent calendar would renew the senior transportation get-around program, which provides relatively inexpensive for the user on-demand taxi service. And I was pleased to learn about it because I didn't know about it until I checked the agenda, and I'm definitely over 60. This is one way to avoid a second car and provides so many other climate benefits. I ask that the program continue and that the council have a discussion as soon as possible about extending the program to disabled folks under 65. I support the program, as do many of my colleagues, provides reduction in greenhouse gases, and provides climate adjustments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robert. We have no further requests for public comment.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll move on to number 11.
We, we need a motion and a second.
Oh, yes.
Make a motion?
Second.
Deputy Clerk?
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero.
Enthusiastic, yes. Number 11.
Well, me again. I just, I brought this up mainly to recognize it as a great program for the city. About 25 years ago, on one of the meetings about Bay Meadows, we talked about the great separations, and I said, wouldn't it be a great idea to have a shuttle that went through the western side of San Mateo to bring residents to the train or to the business district at 25th Avenue? And that has happened, and it's a great thing, and I want to make sure residents of the city know it's available. I use the shuttles on my side of town all the time. They really are great, and they're always on time, which is great, too.
Any other comments? Great. We'll open it up for public comment, please.
Opening public comment for item number 11 on the agenda. I have one hand raised in Zoom, and no hands or no yellow speaker slips in person. I invite Robert Whitehair to go ahead and provide your comment.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I really want to thank council member Hedges for taking this off the consent calendar and giving it an opportunity for us to have more discussion. I appreciate- I appreciate it. The other thing I just want everybody to know that Councilmember Hedges alluded to is that the shuttle is open to all San Mateo residents. And I had thought that it was open just to office workers and so on, but it's open to everybody. It's convenient for me, and I'm going to start using it. It's another good way to avoid greenhouse gases, and I appreciate what the city of San Mateo is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. There are no further public comment.
Thank you. Number 17? Oh, I'm sorry, a vote.
Move approval on item number 11.
Second.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Item carries 5-0.
Great. Okay, now we'll move on to item number 17.
Okay, and I will talk and give Councilmember Hedges a rest. I just wanted to pull this item so that everyone recognized and took a chance to read this, because the Downtown San Mateo Association is, up until the beginning of July, an entirely volunteer organization made up of people who are running businesses during the day, concerned community members, who are really working to try and make the downtown everything it can be. And given their availability of time and resource, I think they've done a great job. I also want to point out the fact that they have just hired an executive director who will be starting next month, and we're so excited about that to really increase the energy, the focus, and increase DSMA's involvement in everything that's going on downtown. And I, for one, am very much looking forward to working with the DSMA, the Chamber, Jennifer Chen, and everyone else in the city to make our downtown the best, most vibrant place it possibly can be.
Any other comments? Great. Okay, we'll open it up for public comment.
There are any members of the public who'd like to speak to this item, please deliver a yellow speaker slip or raise your hand in Zoom. Madam Mayor, there are no requests to speak on this item.
Okay. And now, anyone care to make a motion?
I will make a motion.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Wonderful. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Do we have any members?
Madam Mayor, I have one public comment request to speak, and this is for Mike Cagiano. We'll set the timer at three minutes.
Hello, Mike Cagiano. I want to welcome our mayor back. I'm very happy to see you in your seat and continue with your duties. And it just underlines the fact that we're all one phone call away from a serious crisis in our lives, and I kind of think that underlines, again, the fact that we're all here for each other. And anything other than that is self-delusion, you know? So, thank you. And I want to thank Deputy Mayor Nash for sitting in so capably. Thank you. And our city manager. He's not getting away that easy. I just, if you want to take up tennis, I'm available, you know? Just, I don't want to take away from the kids and the wife, but join the retirees, you know? It's a good life. Okay, one item on the B Street project, just want to throw this out there. I was reading, and one concern was the, what do we do about the restrooms? And I was thinking, I read another article that there are a good many storefronts vacant in the general area. So perhaps a thought would be to either lease or buy a centrally located storefront presently not being used, and maybe put in some additional plumbing, make it a centralized indoor restroom, much as they have at Hillsdale Mall. Works very well for them, and it's just something to think about. It's sort of a lot easier than digging a hole and putting it brand-new from ground zero. So anyway, just a thought. Next item, Palo Alto's revisiting the concept of a viaduct to bring their Caltrain above the streets. Seem to have a similar problem we do. You've got several grade crossings very close to each other, so you can't really utilize what we've just completed, those three absolutely magnificent underpasses that we've got on 25th and 31st. I drive through those when I don't even have to. I mean, they're just such a pleasure to utilize. Who is that weird guy? But anyway, they're fantastic. But what they did was add a rendering, and I think the Daily Post, and it's quite attractive. And basically, in Europe, you see them everywhere. It's an open trestle, open, raised, and obviously, it's in our distant future because they're just finally putting the electric in there and figuring that one out. But the fact remains, ultimately, it would be nice to get rid of the 19th century grade crosses we've got, you know? All you need is a horse and a buggy. It might go with us. Up and down they go, you know? So again, that, you know, that makes it difficult for fire, emergency vehicles. They can't get through, and it's been that way since the city began. So might be time to make another consideration. In dealing with our city, I know we had issues with our mayoralty in the beginning of the year, and I thought about, I think one thing, Congressman, I made you a congressman. Mr. Newsom stated about having two bites of the apple, and I think, you know, the conflict was about an honorary mayoralty that was granted real power, which in a sense, I don't think was the intent of the framers of the city charter way back when. You know, let's say you're running the city council, public face for one year, and then it's rotated. I like that. I think that's an excellent mechanism. I don't think it should be changed whatsoever.
Mr. Cagiano, your time is up. But it sounds like you have many more ideas to share, so I hope you'll come back, and we will be doing some outreach in the council priority efforts to review our charter. So there'll be plenty of opportunities.
Fine. I'll just leave it that the tie-breaking function is the issue, and I think that should be eliminated, and I'll leave it to a future reference.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, we have no further requests for public comment.
Excellent. So we'll move on to our public hearing, item number 22, fiscal year 2023 to 2024, operating and capital budget. And again, appropriations limit adoption in fiscal years 2023 to 2028, capital improvement program approval. We have a presentation, I hope, from our finance director, Rich Lee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is the second public hearing for the proposed 2023-24 budget, as well as the 2023-28 CIP. So this is the third time that the council has seen the budget. The first was on April 17th. We had our first public hearing on June 5th, so this is our second public hearing. The total proposed budget for next fiscal year is $317.1 million. Three-quarters of that is for our operating budget, which makes sense because we are a service organization. The remaining 25% is for our CIP. Where the money's coming from, you know, the $300 million, over half of that comes from the general fund. And on the operating budget side, two-thirds of that is the general fund, which is typically why, when I make presentations in the council, the focus is always on the general fund. For the general fund next fiscal year, we're anticipating slightly over $159 million in total revenues, $171.7 million in total expenditures. So this will be $12.6 million use of unassigned fund balance. For the general fund, over 80% of our revenues comes from tax revenue, a large majority of that comes from property tax. For property tax, these are the major components of property tax. The large orange-yellow band there, that's what's called current year secured. So when property owners pay their property taxes for the current year, that's our share of that, about 15 and a half cents for every dollar that's paid in property tax. However, the focus of this next slide is going to be actually on a smaller component, which is property tax in lieu of VLF. As the council may recall, this from the last slide, the orange band is what we are owed over the next 10 years. The gray band is what we anticipate is going to be available. So there's going to be a series of shortfalls, again, due to the composition of non-basic aid school districts versus basic aid school districts. Last bit of good news, which the council is aware, SB 101, Senate Bill 101, passed by both, the legislature is awaiting the governor's signature, so we're hopeful for good news. There's a letter coming from the mayor to Governor Newsom advocating for approval of that. So the second largest tax revenue source for the city is sales tax. Shows a 20-year history, as well as the anticipated projection for the next 10 years. Contrasts that with our recovery of TOT. So sales tax recovered in two years, again, two and a half times faster than the Great Recession. We have yet to recover from the pandemic-driven recession in TOT. However, we do anticipate that that will occur by about 2026. Real property transfer tax, again, quite volatile. The impetus for the drop in real property transfer tax is the high-interest rate environment, which is the federal government's efforts to try to address inflationary pressures by moving the federal funds rate. On the expenditure side, total general fund expenditures, $171.7 million. A little over half of that is for public safety. This is historically consistent with our previous budgets, as well as most full-service cities throughout the San Francisco Bay area. As noted in the staff report, most of the additions to the operating budget were really around the pain points, where we needed more engineering support, more planning, more wastewater treatment plant operations. And really, this slide, if there's a punchline to this budget, it is that the city is in a good position. We have the resources, thanks to the council's prudence in the wake of the Great Recession, to build up its reserves in anticipation of the next economic cycle, which we're in right now. This comes directly from the general fund long-term financial plan, and each of these components represents portions of our reserves policy. So the bottom part is our 25% operating reserve. The orange part represents the housing set-aside, which, based on the housing element, we're going to continue to contribute to that roughly $1 million per year. And the top part, which is the greenish part, we're going to be drawing down on that, roughly $50 million over the next eight years. We're relying on that to get us through this economic cycle. And that is our ability to continue to invest in our infrastructure and our employees. Shifting to other operating funds, the construction services fund accounts for all of our building permit operations. And again, this is a planned use of reserves in that fund for next fiscal year. For the sewer fund, the majority of that coming from sewer service fees, which the council approves, the five-year rate plan on consent. On the expenditure side, the majority of that is for CIP, and namely, that's for execution and completion of the clean water program. And on the CIP, for the five-year period, almost $285 billion. For the next fiscal year, it's $78 million. I just wanted to point out that the majority of that is for the sewer program and for the clean water program, and bringing that to fruition. On the position budget, again, I mentioned additions to kind of the pain points, planning, building, and wastewater treatment. So there's three resolutions for the council. The recommendation is that the council adopt resolutions to approve the fiscal year 23-24 operating and capital budgets, the 23-24 position budget, the fiscal year 23-24 GAN appropriations limit, and the fiscal years 23-28 capital improvement program. Before I ask the council for questions, I do want to acknowledge the very hard work and late nights and just dedication to the finance department and to the city of my dedicated but mighty and small budget staff, and that is my deputy director of finance, Karen Wong, and our budget analyst, Renee Halcon. And without that, we would not be able to deliver this to you tonight. And with that, I welcome any questions.
Questions from council? Wow, that's, that means you did a great job, and kudos to your team. Rich, I mean, this is the third time that we're seeing the budget. I think that, please don't take our lack of questions to mean anything other than a lot of confidence in arriving to where we are. Oh, we have a question.
Rich, first of all, thank you, man. Anytime I ever ask you a question with measure of everything, you had everything nailed down so tightly. Appreciate your expertise. I would appreciate it if you would, for the public, explain how we're getting shortchanged with VLF. Governor Schwarzenegger's a great gift to us.
And I'll try to be brief about this. This goes back 20 years ago. The state was having issues with balancing its budget, and in order to do that, it was going to reduce the vehicle license fee from 2% to 0.65%. That was going to be disastrous for all of the local governments. So as a part of the 2004 budget deal, there was an agreement to swap that reduction in vehicle license fees for property tax. But this wasn't property tax that materialized out of thin air. It's property tax from non-basic aid school districts. And then the state would use its general fund to backfill the non-basic aid school districts. In San Mateo County, and we are at present the only county in the entire state that has this problem, although there are about three counties that are on the precipice of that. We have 26 school districts. 17 of them are basic aid, which means that there's only six to backfill with their property taxes what we're owed. It's not enough. So for fiscal year '22, there was a shortfall of $33 million, and our share of that was $1.9 million. The process to remedy that is to file a claim at the end of each fiscal year, and the county does that on all of our behalfs, and for the state to consider for their budget for the subsequent year. There's a two-year gap. And what we saw in January as a part of the proposed budget was there was no appropriation. And to no one's surprise, the May revise also did not include the appropriation. We've sent numerous letters from Mayor Lee, I think we're on the third letter now, and asking for consideration. Fortunately, SB 101, passed by both, by the legislature, is awaiting the governor's consideration and signature. For this budget, the assumption is that the state is not going to make us halt for next fiscal year. So if we are fortunate and the governor does sign SB 101, then we can update that as a part of the mid-year budget. But that is the growing concern, is that this VLF shortfall will continue to grow as more and more non-basic aid school districts shift to basic aid status.
Can you tell the public how much closer we'd be to balancing our budget without reserves if it was not for this sleight of hand from the state legislature?
I appreciate that, and I pointed that out in the last presentation. We're assuming a $12.6 million net loss for the general fund for next year. If we were actually paid what we're owed for VLF, including the shortfall from 2022 and the full amount for the current fiscal year, the general fund loss would only be $5.8 million.
Yeah, I pay less right now for my registration fees for my auto bill than I did for my first car in Kansas in 1957. It's crazy. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, excellent. Let's open it up to public comment.
If there are any requests to speak on this item, please deliver a yellow speaker slip or raise your hand if you're participating via Zoom. Madam Mayor, we have no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you so much. Okay, this is the time for council to...
Point of order, do we need to vote? Can we vote them as a group, or do we just vote it as one budget item?
Oh, we can make one uniform motion.
Okay. And I would move approval of the 23-24 budget for the city of San Mateo.
Does anyone have a comment that they would like to make about it before we move to vote?
I didn't, yeah, we do.
Just to echo the comments of my fellow council members, and this is the third time we've heard this, and each time I learned... time we've heard this, and each time I learn something new. But you are, and your team, have all the data together, and you're a good communicator of what that means. So that's as important as getting the numbers right. So thank you to all of you for this effort.
Thank you. No other public comment?
Okay, so I will say that I think we should be very proud of this budget. It reflects our values. It reflects good fiscal policy, prudent fiscal policy, and I think we're on a very strong trajectory, even with the decision to spend down our rainy day reserves. I think that that was not a decision that we took lightly, and we are being very conservative, not factoring in the state reimbursement, so carrying that cost and not counting on it, or carrying the shortfall and not counting it in the bank is a prudent approach, and I support that. I wanted to just point out that while we are in very strong financial standing, we do have, and I always will remind us, that we have significant unfunded needs. And so while this budget is reflective of us maintaining high quality and continuity of services, that really only pertains to our core services, and there is significant to the tune of nearly $250 million of infrastructure projects and service needs that are currently unfunded. And so I hope, you know, as we balance out the holistic picture of the city's finances, I think it's really important to continually elevate that fact and the steps that the council is taking to meet those needs, which, you know, include things like going to the voters and potentially supporting a storm water, or sorry, a storm management fee. So with that, if there's no other comments from council, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Could you please put up the slide again?
So I can read it. So where are we? A motion to adopt resolutions to approve the fiscal year 202324 operating and capital budgets and the 202324 position budgets, the fiscal year 202324 again appropriation limits, and the fiscal years 2023 to 2028 capital improvement program. Call for a motion, please.
Still moved.
Second.
Deputy clerk, please.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz-Nash?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Rich, and to your team. He's great. All right, we are moving on to new business. Item 23, racial equity art project artist and design selection approval for consideration. Heather Stewart, our senior management analyst, has a presentation for us. With Denise Garcia, maybe?
Thank you. My apologies. Good evening, Mayor, and, excuse me, council members.
We have water for you, please help yourself.
Oh, yeah, I think we'll get through it. Thank you. My name is Heather Stewart. I am a senior management analyst in the community development department, and my partner here...
Hi, Denise Garcia, City Manager's Office Management Analyst. Happy to be here.
We are here tonight, as the title says, we are here to share the recommendation from the city arts committee regarding the approval of the artist and his design concept for the racial equity art project. Just real quickly, to review where we've been, it's taken a while to get here, and so just a reminder of what we started with in July 2020. The council adopted a resolution to reform the city's commitment to racial equity and equality. And with that, the council requested an art project that reflected and promoted racial equity in the community. With that, they requested that the civic arts committee run the project and take care of that implementation. Things were a little slow during a couple of years, and so, but the project activity picked up again in mid-'22, which we released then a request for qualifications for artists. We publicized it out as far as we could in English and in Spanish. We received 12 responses, and seven were selected to submit proposals. And then in March, we had six artists who submitted a total of 26 designs out of six projects. And with that, we implemented a lot of community feedback and public outreach to do that. In the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications, we did have plenty of information in there to the applicant artists, and some of that include where we were going to do it downtown San Mateo, on the new pedestrian mall from First to Third avenues on B Street. The purpose of this is really, I'm going to read, "to bring the community together and raise awareness surrounding the growing demand for representation of San Mateo's diverse population and commitment to racial equity and equality." So this is an important thing to carry with this art. The mural, the artist's designs were, I'm sorry, totally, the RFQ provided a lot of information on the details on what the submittal of the proposals would be. We did take a specific effort in bringing in some BIPOC and local artists as applicants and submitters. We did not require it, but we really tried to bring in our local artists. We did have three out of the six, out of them. So the civic arts committee agreed that it was very important for them to gather a lot of information about what the community thinks about the designs, proposed designs. This was a very different and unique process for the artists to experience, because usually, what we did is we got designs out there, and the public spoke to the designs, instead of hiring an artist who then went out and collected. So it was a little unique for the artists to participate in this. So we reached out with the community feedback with online survey, and we did several for in-persons. We spoke with the DEI, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force, excuse me. The solicited feedback was through three votes. Everybody at those events that you saw, they each got three votes, and they could apply them, they could vote for one with three votes. So we did get a lot of feedback by that. Then the recommendation came from Civic Arts Committee, I'll speak to in a moment, was that the comments and the recommendations from the public really concurred with the feedback from the community. They also supported the expansion to the First and Second Avenue block. At the time they made their discussion about that, it wasn't confirmed yet, so we know that that is part of that opportunity. Mr. Rafael Blanco is the artist and design that was selected and identified above and beyond any of the others. It was definitively the favorite designs. He is with here, with us on Zoom, I believe, listening in from Illinois, available to us, should there be any questions directly to the artist. So he had a lot of, several years in, he lives in Illinois currently, but he lived in the Bay Area for several years, and he utilized his experiences with the communities that he experienced here in the Bay Area and in the San Mateo area. He's very excited already to take the feedback that he's gotten back from the community regarding the designs, and therefore, with all that and the civic arts committee's unanimous recommendation to select him to be our artist and approve his artist, the design that goes with him. Just for, I'd like to read this out loud for the public to hear this, too. It's a different color on here, I'll put this on. I think this is an important theme that he brought to us with his design, that cultural pattern design is a celebration of different cultures and their unification into one. It is a visual representation of the cultural diversity we face in the U.S., which is a beautiful idea, but we, as we know, it is also difficult. This is an attempt to unify us so we can continue living instead of the same roof, on the same ground, and learning from each other's cultures. So I think that's a really nice statement with the design that he's brought. And speaking of the design, just to share with the public who didn't have an opportunity to see this, this is the design, the first filled, the comments that we had, and you'll see on the street layover, that a lot of the community really liked the space filled with vibrant and bold colors, that they liked a lot of the patterns and designs, and it represented various cultures in a non-divisive way. So the community also provided recommendations and requests to include other cultural communities to, especially since we are looking to expand. This was only 75 feet that he proposed initially, so we have more space to go that we can include other components of our community and cultures. So again, Mr. Blanco is really excited to start working on that design. And speaking of next steps in the design, is we'll have a conversation with him about the revisions to that and responses to the community, and of course, the budget that goes along with that, since it's going to be expanded. So then the CAC, the Civic Arts Committee, will approve, or being at the request, that you allow them to make the final design decision, and then the agreement with the budget will likely come back to city council in accordance with the purchasing policy in the city. Our initial timeline was June, right now, to be painting, but things got delayed, and Mr. Blanco has a project scheduled now, and he is ready to go in October. That is when our paint, painting timeline. And then Denise will take over the facilitation of installation and completion of the project. So at this time, we're open for questions. Thank you.
Council questions? Councilmember Hedges?
Thank you. This is beautiful. I really love it. It's so vibrant.
I'm sorry?
It's so vibrant. So I'm trying to clear front of my mind, it'll be on both blocks, right?
Yes, that's the intent. We certainly focused on the third to second, third.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that. And I'd actually had a conversation with Drew about it earlier today, and I was concerned about leveling the streets, and he explained to me, which is obvious, actually, that it'll get a lot of scuffing and it'll need to be revitalized occasionally, so it really doesn't make any difference. Let's make it as beautiful as soon as possible. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, okay. So I had a question. So this, you know, this has been such an evolving process, right, that started really kind of back when we were talking about Black Lives Matter, right? And one of the things that kind of stood out for me in this design was the absence of representation of African-American culture. And so, you know, I was wondering if that was part of the conversation at all. I mean, I think that, I just don't consider, I think it's, I think there's an, you know, sort of an expansive way to think about the representation from the reference point of, you know, African design, that is related to an important connection to African-American and Black culture, but it's not exactly the same thing. And so for me, that is sort of a question, unanswered question in this present design, and also just curious to hear if that came up at all with the CAC or the DEI task force.
There was response, there were questions about that, and some of the designs from other artists also reflected some of that comment. The feedback was discussed with the Civic Arts Committee, and there was some conversation about the feedback, and what often was spoken to is trying to bring all the communities It wasn't specific discussion specifically for the Black community. There was a variety of conversations with the feedback from the community and wanting to have an inclusive focus on the art that includes more than just one cultural group, excuse me. So it did evolve over the time. It wasn't just this commission or committee, excuse me. Over a couple of the years, we had a couple of different people, but it's, it is what we, what we have agreed upon that would be the good one, a good art design, that inclusive, is inclusive to all, and possibly expanding designs that also may have a better, a more definitive design that's within the whole. So I don't know that I'm, I don't really have an answer for you specifically.
As a follow-up, just a question, you know, maybe as we, as there is room to, you know, iterate, then maybe this is something that we can talk to, you know, the NAACP about in terms of, in bringing their input into it. I just, I don't want to lose the...
I just, I don't want to lose the thread and the genesis of, of this idea that really was centering this, the city's efforts of, you know, of equity and anti-racist policy and practice, and specifically calling out anti-Black racism, right? That, that, that was, that was really the spark that, that arrived us to where we are. And so I just, I don't want to lose, lose that momentum. And I think that maybe that we can continue to push the, the design and feedback a little bit further to be inclusive of, you know, more, even more inclusive, expanding. Like, it just strikes me that there is a Chinese design, right? That's specifically calling out one Asian culture, right, and ethnicity. And then there's African. So there's, so there's a little bit of lopsided or sort of imbalance in that, and maybe it's just sort of terminology or like the language used around it, but it, I, it, it strikes me as sort of an imbalance.
And, and that was part of the conversation with the committee as well. The different, the different community, parts of the community and their inclusion in this and not very representative of, of different, different cultures within.
So if I may through, through the mayor, so I, I would like to emphasize also that what you have before you is a representative piece. It's going to be built out to be more inclusive and to be more representative. And so if we have council direction tonight in terms of some of the other cultures or backgrounds or communities that you want to see represented, then that's something that we could certainly direct the CAC to explore and the artists to include. So if the council wants to give us specific direction as to what you want to see included, then that's direction that we can take back, and that's something that we can have included. And so I think that that's something that, that we can explore tonight and bring back with that direction. And so that's, that, that's something that we can definitely do. And so I think we have at least 200 more feet or 300 more feet. We have about 300 more feet to go.
There's, there's a lot.
And so we definitely talked about it being more representative of San Mateo specifically, because we did recognize that there are a lot of cultural communities that were left out that are very specific to San Mateo. And so that's exactly what we would like to hear from you tonight.
Excellent.
Mayor, could I make a request?
Is it a question?
It's a request.
Okay, maybe.
I'd like to see that slide again.
Okay. So this is the time for questions, and then we'll go to public comment, and then we'll do.
Slide would help me with more questions.
Do you have a question, if that's okay?
I think Councilmember Hedges has a question.
No, I just, I just want to see the slide. I'll ask my questions later.
Oh, okay. Please go ahead.
The question was, is the, so, I mean, obviously, it's, it's going to be painted. Are we putting down a 3M protective layer or anything to, to back it up? Or what's, how, how is it being, I guess from a more technical perspective, how's it being done? Is, is it going to just be painted on the street and then repainted when need be? Or is there going to be, for example, I know there's a 3M substrate that's a kind of gritty mat that's, can be applied over it and give it more life, or so just curious how that works.
The, the, the work that Kathy had been working with for the pedestrian mall, the consultants provided paint recommendations and process that, that were provided to all the, all the artists, so that they have the color palettes as well as the, the better type of paint that will be sturdy for feet walking across. There is the expectation that there is a lifetime to this art based on the usage on it, as far as either replacing it in three to five years or something to that effect as well. So that has been also part of the conversation, that there is a timeline to this particular artwork. But yes, there will be the preservation that had been recommended to them.
It is a special paint that's meant for walking surfaces in public areas.
Yeah, that's correct. It's all the street specifics.
And, and so, yeah, I do have another follow-up about that, and just in terms of the, the life cycle. So, so we're thinking three to five years before it would require a maintenance-ish?
We've not done this before, so we're, we're not 100%.
Don't you have a crystal ball?
We don't exactly know how long it, you know, we, we want them to use the paint that stands up the longest, but, so we don't really know how long.
But that's what's estimated.
That's, that's the estimate, yeah, three, three to five. I am, you know, I'm guessing just looking at street, street lines or crosswalks and painting, it's pretty robust. It's not going to have a lot of cars over it. It'll have a lot of feats over it.
But not a lot of feat compared to a crosswalk.
That's correct.
I don't think that this, the pedestrian mall areas experience as much foot volume as, say, a crosswalk or other highly traveled pedestrian areas like a sidewalk or something like that. So in terms of the estimated durability and lifespan of three to five years, I think that we have a reasonable expectation that this would stand up fairly well, but there would be some maintenance that we would expect it would be needed. I don't think full replacement, but probably some touch-ups from time to time.
Great. Let's open it up for public comment, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we're now requesting any individuals who wish to speak to this item, please raise your hand. Or if you are in person, please deliver a yellow speaker slip.
Madam Mayor, I do not have any requests for public comment, but I do have the, I do note that the proposed artist Rafael Blanco has his hand raised.
Oh, wonderful. Rafael, we'd love to hear from you.
Go ahead, Rafael.
Hello, everyone. This is Rafael Blanco. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for having me. It is a great pleasure to be here with you guys. I'm actually in Reno, Nevada right now. I'm, I'm working on a project here. I just want to say that as an immigrant, this project means a lot to me. I'm from Spain, my wife is from Mexico, our kids were born here. So the concept and the, and the purpose of it, it really is very special. I have heard everything you said. I, I agree with, with all the public comments with, okay, so with every comment that you also said. My job as an artist, as a public artist, is to take all that and then recreate a better design, because public art is for the people. And, and so I just want to, I just want to explain that I take that very seriously, and, and that this is not just about my style. It is really taking the community part and how to express it in the best way. So, so that is my purpose as a public artist. So if you have any questions, I'm here, but, but thank you so much for your time.
Great to have you, Rafael. Thank you for being here. Okay, so we will close public comment, and this is the time for council deliberation and comments. Who would like to start?
Thank you for the presentation and for all the work that's brought us to where we are today. I appreciate the work of the Civic Arts Committee and that of the community to align on a design that I, I find quite appealing. Thank you to the DEI Task Force and staff work and all the work of the artists that brought us here, and congratulations to Rafael, and thank you. I look forward to seeing your work enhance and enrich our downtown. I appreciate the mayor's comments through her questions. I, and I agree that it would be great to have a particularly African-American element to this. I understand that there will be a discussion to follow between the CAC and the artist on how to increase the number of communities and maximize a now larger area. So I, I think African-American elements make sense to include, and, and I saw Japanese as well and, and the potential for others. And so I defer to the, the decision of the CAC in, in conversation with the artist, but feel that these comments were, were useful to share, and thank you.
This is just so exciting. Congratulations to the community, to everyone who is, who came up with this idea. Mayor Lee, you've been involved with it from the start, and, you know, everything that you've done, it's, it's amazing. And I think Rafael, thank you so much. I'd love to know what you're working on in Reno, because I'd love to actually go see it when it's done. I think that would be really exciting, and, and just over a mountain or two. But I think this represents so much, and I agree with Mayor Lee's and Councilmember Lorraine's comments about making sure we have a vibrant African-American cultural segment. But there's also the opportunity to break down. You know, I look at this, and obviously, I defer to the artist. I mean, at the end of the day, he is a public artist, and he will know how to, to do this. But breaking down African, breaking down European into things that make sense from a San Mateo perspective, I'm sure that's all been part of your discussion. I would just love to throw out there that when I saw this, I thought, wow, I can see so many cultural programs on B Street that are inspired by this. So Mexican music, or Chinese painting, or anything. There's just so much that could inspire it. So I would really encourage you to think about what could be done in addition to this. So it's not just a beautiful painted mural on the street, but it inspires us to always be talking about our diverse culture and what that means. So I think that's something we all can do, but I'm very excited by this, and thank you very much. I look forward to what's coming next.
So as I said before, this is very vibrant, and it's gorgeous. And looking it over, originally, I saw the African design, but I really took heart to what the mayor said. When I moved here in 1970, there was a very large African-American community and Japanese community, and most of them in north central. There were African-American businesses that I, from time to time, took part with. And so they were part of, and many of the Japanese residents were small business people, a very vibrant part of the community, and some are still here, and that should be recognized. And a new group, especially in D4 and D2, are Pacific Island culture that add a lot to this city, especially in taking care of the elderly and many other social types of services that they perform. So we should try, and I understand how difficult it would be to satisfy everybody, but I think we should try to highlight those three as well. And I agree with the, the mayor on the Black or African-American community. So thank you.
I don't have much to add. I think the design is vibrant. It excites me. I look forward to walking down the street and being active on, on B Street. I concur with what everyone else has said. I think, you know, African-American as opposed to African is important to differentiate. I do agree with what Rich said. We have a huge Japanese population, more sushi restaurants in San Mateo than any other city on the peninsula. The other communities that I, you know, in addition to Pacific Islander, is the other ones that I know of, particularly east of the railroad tracks, are the Portuguese and the Guatemalan. We have, I think, the largest contingency of Guatemalans in the city of San Mateo. So again, I, I don't want to break apart, I think the concept is fantastic, but anything we can do to pull in to our, our strings and our roots of, of the people who lived here and who built this city, I think are, are really important. So thank you for the great work, and I'm looking forward to seeing it.
And if I could just add one more comment through the mayor. Certainly, we also have a very large South Asian population within the city, and I know that will be taken into consideration and different cultures within that. South Asian.
I, I am also inspired by the design. I'm really, really thrilled at the process that has, that has been underway for so many years and involved so many touchpoints with the community. And I, I actually think that the, the effort to take designs held by the city to the community before making a selection, you know, was actually the right way to do community engagement. That's, that's, that's the ordering that I think really works. It gives people ownership and buy-in to, to a process that is actually going to be very reflective of, of who we are and our values. So I'm, I'm very, very encouraged by the direction. I think that a lot of great ideas about specific call-outs to cultures and, and communities in San Mateo. The one that I didn't hear that I, I think is really important is our Italian-American community. We have the Italian-American Center downtown San Mateo, who I know would really appreciate representation. And, and so I, I, I'm really, you know, I'm really looking forward to what Rafael will come up with, given the feedback that I know he's integrating. And, and I did want to just clarify for, for the record, it is a valid statistic that there are more Guatemalans in the city of San Mateo than any other city in the Bay Area. So we have the most populous Guatemalan population here in San Mateo. So an important community to, to be well represented. And with that, this is exactly where we should be putting our, our resources and our, and our time in showcasing and celebrating our cultures. So thank you so much. All right, we will move on. Oh, we have to vote. Again, that's the third time I forgot to vote on something. Okay, I would like to call for a motion to approve the Civic Arts Committee recommended artist Rafael Blanco and his design cultural pattern for the Racial Equity Art Project, and delegate the Civic Arts Committee to work with the artists to revise and approve the final design. Call for a motion.
I make so moved.
Second.
Deputy Clark, please.
Deputy Mary Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Wonderful. Okay, now we will move on to new business. We are past our 9:00 PM deadline that our city manager gave us. Item 24.
He said nine. He didn't say nine what?
COVID-19 Small Business Grant Budget Appropriation and Grant Agreement. We have a presentation from our Economic Development Manager, Jennifer Chen, and we're getting a presentation set up.
Good morning, good morning, good evening. I am usually asleep. Mayor and City Council, I am Jennifer Chen, and the item in front of you tonight is a COVID-19 Small Business Grant Program. The council action requested is to adopt a resolution to approve a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $100,000 for a grant agreement with the County of San Mateo to administer a COVID-19 Small Business Grant Program and authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement in substantially the form presented. The county approached the city with a pilot program to utilize $360,000 of Federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds to help small businesses with their recovery from COVID-19. San Mateo San Mateo, San Bruno, and South San Francisco were selected as the initial pilot cities. The Small Business Post-Pandemic Recovery Grant Program provides technical and financial assistance to small businesses financially impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and have continued to operate their business. The funds from the program can be used for accessibility requirements, enhancement of customer service, and increased business resiliency. The grant funding criteria. Businesses must meet all the following criteria. They must be independently owned and not dominant in its field. Food-serving businesses with fewer than 15 employees have $3 million or less in gross revenue, a valid business license tax license, experience of financial hardship due to the pandemic, a physical business address in the city, and attend three online webinars. That's the technical assistance part of the grant. The educational requirements. While all the businesses that receive the grant must attend all three webinars, any business in the county or in the city can attend the webinars if they wish to participate, even if they do not qualify for a grant. All the webinars will be translated to Mandarin Chinese and Spanish. The businesses will receive technical training on the following topics: Disabled Access Compliance, ADA, review of regulatory processes and permits and approvals, and considerations they need to be thinking about in order to make physical improvements for small business owners and property owners. The grant award. Qualified businesses may receive up to $5,000 to purchase accessible furniture, outdoor dining furnishings, parklet design costs, and fixtures. The city intends to find a third-party partner to work with the city to administer the grant, and the grant agreement ends June 30, 2024.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. I am so happy to see this on the agenda. Let's start with the council questions.
Thank you through the mayor. Jennifer, I was just curious to understand why only, is it that we are only offering this to food-serving businesses? Maybe I should just start with that, to just confirm that that's the case.
We selected the food-serving businesses because we want to address a lot of the outdoor dining lawsuits related to ADA accessibility. If that is something council wishes to open up to additional businesses, that is something we, that's an alteration that the city has jurisdiction to change.
Well, I realize that the grant itself is not immense, and so I don't know if I would necessarily go there, but I'm just curious to understand, for non-food-serving businesses, I'm thinking, you know, of haircutters, for example, salons, who certainly suffered quite a bit and are likely, you know, having similar challenges, although perhaps not in an outdoor dining sense. What may exist for them?
So they would have to have experienced a COVID, a financial, sorry, hurt financially during COVID and still remain in business. So they can use the funds towards, if we open that up, they could use the funds towards, or they would still have to attend all three webinars. And assuming that they have the financial loss, attended all three webinars, they could use the funds to make interior improvements to be more ADA accessible. But I have not heard of any ADA lawsuits to our salon businesses.
Okay, those are my questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think this is a great opportunity. Would there be, is there any opportunity, you mentioned parklet design, to come up with some kind of a basis that would be relatively common, either by street or by area, so it wouldn't just be one food service business, but at least it would get the base for many?
You know, this question's been asked by businesses, by different people, and I think the, just because each of the stores are so unique, some of them have, and where they're located is so different, and how they want to utilize the parklet, it may be difficult. You know, I have provided businesses who have asked me some, what they call like mass-produced parklets essentially, and given them some general information that they can work with these mass-produced parklets to see if that works for their business needs. Curry Now, for example, has reached out to me for that. I have not seen them move forward with a parklet with that. Hummus on Fourth Avenue has asked for that, and I have also not seen them submit something. I don't know if it's, I think that may not give an individual business all that they want in outdoor dining, if they desire to invest in that outdoor dining opportunity.
So you're saying that they want something that's more unique to them?
I think so. That's what I've seen.
Yeah, I guess I would just say, if you, in your outreach about all this, if you could specifically prod that particular point, particularly, you and I have had discussions about B Street. So just to see if your assumption is in fact correct.
Do you mean work with the businesses and?
Yeah, to see if there's any real interest. Proactively asking, is there any interest in having a modicum of commonality in the parklets that could be subsidized by this funding?
Sure, we can work with the businesses that would be interested in that. But they have seemed to want, very individualized based on their business.
Thank you.
Actually, kind of building on that line of questioning, one of the cost barriers, or one of the barriers to implementation that I've heard from some of our retailers is the design costs for building out parklets. And so I wonder if there is an opportunity to couple this outreach and educational opportunity with perhaps some technical assistance, or even some pre-approved template plans for parklets that could lower the barriers to, you know, for some of the businesses who want to build parklets but don't want to spend $20,000 on a consultant or an architect. And so I guess there's, you know, I'm just wondering if, this is such an exciting program, and there's this, you know, there's this window of opportunity to bring people through our doors and attend three workshops that are going to be open to everyone, and I wonder how we're thinking about coupling, you know, some of the solutions that will get folks closer to actually building out their parklets and getting them, you know, streamlined faster through our permitting process and our reviews and all the things to make sure that they're safe and code compliant.
So each of the cities are getting $100,000 to administer the grant. A portion of that will be given to a third party who would be doing the actual administration of the grant, and the remaining $60,000 will be provided to Good City. And as part of Good City's work, they will be doing some one-on-one discussions with the businesses to help them plan and understand the designs. But there is no sort of like general architect to go lay out, build out for one large parklet on the two blocks, if that's where council's thinking of?
I don't think that, that wasn't specifically my suggestion or idea or question. It was more like providing sort of template plans, right? You know, that they could use as a basis, as a jump point, right? That that could be just something that is part of a package.
I'm sure we can take existing built-out parklets and provide them to businesses and say, here, these are examples of what's been built before.
That would be great.
We're happy to do that. I can work with staff to give them some ideas. But each individual store is just also so unique.
True, and also I appreciate like some of the details around curb cuts and the location of the utilities. So I.
And the willingness to invest is so different from a plaza to a 3Bs.
Yes, yes. I think that, I guess my line of questioning, the intent of my line of questioning is more just how are we making sure to maximize every possible inch, right? To give people as much information as they can that would be useful to get them across the finish line to actually building an ADA-compliant parklet as soon as possible. So that, I appreciate your answer. Any other questions? Okay, let's open it up for a public comment.
Madam Mayor, I do not have any in-person requests to speak to this item, and there are no requests through Zoom.
Okay. Let us return to council for our comments. Who wants to start? Councilmember Hedges.
So doing the numbers, it looks like we have money for 20 businesses.
Roughly, yes.
Yeah. It's too bad that $64,000, we couldn't just do a lottery and give it out as well.
These are county funds.
I know. So will the grants come directly from the county, or will they come through us? Looks like they come through us.
The process will be that the grant will come to us. That was a request for the supplemental budget appropriation, and then we will engage with a third party. I've already been in discussions with Renaissance and other similar entities to see if they'll be willing to do the actual intake of the application, review their financials to make sure they actually suffered a financial loss.
How much time do you think the webinars will take for a businessperson's day?
It's going to be about one hour each webinar.
Okay, doable. Okay, that's it.
Anyone else?
I'll just thank Jennifer for her presentation and the council members for their comments and interest in doing what we can to maximize the program for our food-serving businesses and their ability to get ADA-compliant parklets out. Thank you, I support that.
Okay, I will say about this effort, I think that it's a very strong precision-based approach that will have high impact for businesses, restaurant businesses that have been limping along during COVID, and then on top of that, being subjected to predatory lawsuits. And so we've been, we've been asking ourselves, what else can we do to support businesses getting resources and insuring themselves up to make themselves code compliant, but also to protect themselves and prevent these frivolous lawsuits. So I am so, so happy to see this, and thank you so much for your efforts, Jennifer. And I hope that this is, you know, a pilot that will, you know, will continue and will have a lot of learning along the way to see how else we can replicate and possibly expand it. So I am thrilled to see us move in this direction. So I would call for a motion to adopt a resolution to approve a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $100,000 for a grant agreement with the County of San Mateo to administer a COVID-19 Small Business Grant Program and authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement in substantially the form presented.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Clark, please call for a vote.
With pleasure, Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, second new, oh, third new business item, number 25, city manager appointment. Recommended. Okay. So I'd like to, we're very excited here. We've gone through a lot of effort and work to select a new city manager, and I don't believe we can get into the details.
Sure, just through the mayor, just to clarify, there will be no staff presentation on this item. We may move directly into questions from council. You may wish to read the recommendation.
Okay, so there's no, okay, so, sorry, we did review this. Okay, so there was no staff presentation from, you know, for the public's knowledge. We went through a robust public process and internal process, including serving on the subcommittee with Councilmember Hedges, and two days of back-to-back interviews, a large and very highly qualified pool of candidates, and made a very strong selection that I think will make our community proud and make our outgoing city manager proud of us. And with that, I would like to adopt a resolution to appoint Alex Kojikayen as city manager, establishing his initial compensation, and authorize the mayor, myself, to execute the employment agreement.
We may wish to take public comment on this item before we move to a vote.
Oh, my gosh, okay, so.
Four.
Okay, let's go with the public comment.
I have no requests in council chambers to speak on this item, and no request in Zoom.
Prove approval of the new city manager.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes, and welcome, Alex Kojikayen. Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you so much. Okay, clearly, I'm out of practice. Lastly, we will move to reports and announcements. Anyone have reports and announcements? Start with Councilmember Hedges.
I attended the Juneteenth celebration at Foster City. It was a great day. I was able to donate a copy of a periodical made for high school kids in about 1957 of the Montgomery Bus Boycott. And in looking at all of the people that are sponsors, I would like to see the city of San Mateo list their name as a sponsor for the Juneteenth celebration, because that was not apparent at the Juneteenth celebration.
Okay, and next?
I just wanted to make sure we called out some upcoming events, particularly, well, I have four of them, which I don't normally do this, but want to put out the pitch that Concerts in the Park Series is starting this Thursday from six or five. So anyhow, look at our parking rec page. Our Concert in the Park Series starts every Thursday for the summer, and they're a lot of fun, and we hope to see you all out there. Secondly, on Saturday, this June, this Saturday, June 24, we have a Complete Streets Bike Tour from 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM. It's starting and ending at Central Park, so I want to encourage people to get out and take the bike tour. Third, this weekend also, the local Peninsula Humane Society has their largest fundraiser of the year. It's actually in Burlingame on Saturday. It's the Bark and Brew Festival from 2:00 to 5:00. And so I just want to encourage the public to attend all of these great events. Summer is here, let's get out and have fun and enjoy our city. And then the last thing I wanted to call out was, this pertains not just to the Girl Scouts, but it's made news recently that the town of Woodside has put laws in place that make it impossible for buses over 30 feet to travel to Hutbert Park in San Mateo County's Hutbert Park. What this means, and it does have a big impact on our community, because there's over 500 girls who go from Girl Scout Peninsula Day Camp, starting in three weeks, and been working with the town of Woodside, this is not a city council, as a city council person, but as a father with daughters who participate in the Girl Scouts. This also impacts not just the Girl Scouts, but several other organizations that use Hutbert Park's facility. For example, there are inner-city Title I programs that cannot bring busloads of children to our county park. So I just want to encourage people to be aware of what that is. The town of Woodside has a meeting on June 27, and also to reach out to the town of Woodside City Council, and also Ray Mueller, our county. Woodside City Council, and also Ray Mueller, our county supervisor, and encourage them to put, put measures in place to ensure that our kids can get to camp and enjoy the outdoors for the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to give my appreciation to Councilmember Newsom for showing some energy at this time on a number of upcoming events, and would second the encouragement to attend the Complete Streets Bike Tour. I am sorry to say I am going to miss it, which is a huge bummer, because I would love to join. I, I will say though, that I did get an opportunity to attend a bike tour back when we, the city was updating its Bicycle Master Plan, and I found it to be a great experience, learning a bit more about not just what we have in our city today, but what we could have, and experience it as a cyclist with others, a diversity of ages and abilities, and get the perspective of city decision-makers and staff along the way. So I, I imagine there will be a similar experience this coming Saturday, and would encourage anyone interested in checking that out. That reminded me that I, I thought it would be good to point out that the city will be having a couple of community meetings related to our New Year's Eve storms, and one of them is tomorrow. So Wednesday, June 21st, from 6:00 to 7:30 here at City Hall in Conference Room C, but if you're not able to make it tomorrow, there will be another meeting in July, open to everyone in the public. It's on Tuesday, July 18th, in the main library. And this will be an opportunity for members of the public to learn some of the analysis from the third-party expert that the city hired to investigate how the city responded to the New Year's Eve storms and our infrastructure. But it's also an opportunity for members of the community to provide some of their experiences if they were affected by the storms, share photos and, and how they experienced the storms, and that will be put into the overall final analysis that'll come back before council in August. So I would encourage anyone able to attend those. Thank you.
And I'd like to do a call-out to all the residents and members of the community who are getting behind the idea of organically bringing events and ideas to get our B Street Pedestrian Mall alive and well this summer and beyond. There's a group called the B Street Boosters, made up of residents and volunteers who are really interested in getting the public's involvement in what events can be put on, how do we work with the city, how do they do things independently? And there was a letter to the editor, our guest perspective, about a week ago in the San Mateo Daily Journal, but anyone who loves the B Street Mall and would like to get involved, the email is B-street-boosters@googlegroups.com. They'd love everyone to get involved, so we really can all be ambassadors for our pedestrian mall.
Thank you. What a fruitful reports and announcements that was. So with that, we will adjourn in memory of a beloved member of our community, a, a neighbor of mine, Mr. Eddie Mack. He was the husband of former San Mateo Mayor Claire Mack, who passed away on Sunday, May 20th, at the age of 95. Eddie was an honorable community member and San Mateo native, who attended San Mateo High School and College of San Mateo. He played football at both schools and was a stellar track and field athlete while attending Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. He was recognized as the first Mustang to capture a California Collegiate Athletic Association title in track and field for a long jump in 1949. Eddie will be inducted into the Peninsula Sports Hall of Fame and honored post-humously at the County History Museum in Redwood City on June 22nd. In addition, Eddie was a U.S. Army veteran of the Korean War and a longtime employee of the U.S. Postal Service. The San Mateo City Council extends our deepest sympathy to former Mayor Claire Mack and her family. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and with that, we will adjourn.